Good afternoon. Thank you all for joining us. I know that many of you are leaving your places of work or school. But no more significant occasion in the history of our city than is represented by the men and women who have dared to step forward to help us to lead our children as they go forward in their adult lives. We are appreciative to each of you for that. We applaud you. We're so happy that you are part of our community. I will now call to order the meeting of the Etowah County Voters League and suspend our normal agenda in favor of the School Board Candidates Forum. Mr. Councilmember Thomas Worthy has chaired the committee to bring this presentation to you tonight, and I will turn it over to him.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for coming out, and this is the Etowah County Voters League. We putting on this function to help the public to come out and listen to the candidates. Each candidate was invited to come and present their platform to give you an idea of who you would like to vote for. And I want to stress that the Voters League, we would not be endorsing anyone. This is a public forum for everyone to come and just speak. And we gave them four questions. They could either speak about those questions, or they could talk about their platform. But we prefer you to talk a little bit about the questions that we asked. We're going to try to go in order, but we've been informed that some of the candidates that cannot make it at their appointed time. So I want to deviate a little bit from the schedule, and I would like to ask Reverend Huff, that he's already been elected to District 3, to come up and speak a little bit about his platform, even though he does not have any opposition. So what you come in also, the candidates, when your time is up, when your five minutes is up, Ms. Shari Bostick will have a timer. She's the timekeeper, so you look at her. So when your five minutes are up, a little alarm will go off, and that'll be your time to sit down. So thank you. While he's coming, I do want to recognize our committee, Ms. Bostick, Ms. Parker, myself, and Ms. Latham, they're out in the front, and Ms. Bothwell, and of course, our chairman, Ms. Mary.
Good afternoon to everyone. I was coming to observe, hopefully to see who I would be working with in the future. I appreciate the opportunity to serve again on the Board of Education. I feel like we're going in a good direction. One thing that I've strived for and continue to strive for is accountability. We want to hold our students as well as our administration accountable for what we're expecting to go forth. Definitely want equal opportunity for all children to receive the highest education. We want to make sure that the curriculum is true, and if the curriculum is true, then our children will be college and career ready. We definitely want our children to strive for achievements, that we want them to achieve to the highest, that they're prepared when they leave our system. And definitely, we also want to accommodate our instructors and our children with what they need in order to survive once they leave our system. I oftentimes say, you can't expect anyone to do a job if they don't have the tools to work with. I'm employed at the Anniston Army Depot, and everything we do, we have a place called a tool crib that we can go to whenever we have to perform a task or a job or duty. We can go to that tool crib and check out a tool. They won't give us a job if they don't have a tool that we need in order to do the work. So in order for our children, our students, to be all they can be, we definitely need to provide them with the tools to work with. And I believe that we get behind our superintendent, get behind administrations, our teachers, and give them everything they need in order to prepare our kids. I think that, you know, we would strive and continue to strive toward excellence. One thing, and I know I'm on the time, but one thing I know that is very heavy in the last few days was the cell phone report the Gadsden City High School has come down with. And I know it's an uproar. I know a lot of people is complaining and fussing about it. But here's the thing, when you abuse your privilege, you lose your privilege. And I witnessed in the hallways where instructors are repeatedly telling kids to take their hoods off, take the earbuds out, put the cell phones up, so much that it actually irritated me hearing them say it. And then to see the kids disrespect the teachers when they know what they're supposed to do. One thing that we have to know that at the beginning of the year, they always have a code of conduct that you have to sign. You know, one thing that people fail to realize, they have allowed them to use those phones, but in the code of conduct, they actually don't supposed to have the phones. And so it's not that they're making up a rule, they're just enforcing the rules. And a lot of times, if you got some folks enforcing the rules and others don't, you start getting a lot of heat coming down, and you get a lot of murmuring and grumbling concerning it. So we all about trying to make sure our children can be the best that they can be. And I thank you for an opportunity to calm and speak, and I look forward to hearing the platform of those who are campaigning in the various different districts. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Reverend Huff. Now we're going to turn the program over to our co-moderators, which is Mr. Dixon Hayes and Reverend Errol Dudley.
Thank you, and welcome to actually a historic political forum tonight, because this is the first time in history we've ever voted for candidates for the city school board. And we thank y'all for turning out. Before I introduce the first candidate, I want to recognize a couple of elected officials who are here tonight. One of them is our state senator Andrew Jones. The other is a man I've known for a number of years, who's a city councilman 30 miles south of us in Anniston, Mr. David Reddick. Do we have Merrill Dixon on the line yet? Okay. Due to a mix-up, Merrill Dixon wasn't able to be here tonight, but he, we are going to allow him to speak by phone. This is District 1 candidate Merrill Dixon. Okay, Mr. Dixon, you can start speaking anytime.
Yes, hello.
Hello.
I can barely hear you. You kind of sound like you had a cave.
I'm at the podium, at the microphone. Can y'all hear Mr. Dixon okay? Okay, everybody in the audience says they can hear you okay, so start speaking anytime.
Right. What would you like to start?
Anywhere you want. You have until about 5:47 to speak, and you can answer the four questions that were submitted, or you can state your platform.
All right, thank you. And who am I speaking with?
You're speaking with the...
What's your name?
My name is Dixon Hayes of WBRC Box 6, and you're speaking to a forum.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hayes. I liked your first name, by the way.
Thank you.
Anyway, I'm sorry that I'm not there. It was kind of a mix-up, and I would have been there in person, but I already have a previous place that I had to be. But anyway, my name is Morrell Dixon. I reside on Riverside, just off of Riverside Drive, in an area called Camden Cove. I'm a candidate for Gaston City Board of Education, District 1. I have 39 years' experience in education, both as a teacher, coach, principal, and I spent the last 12 years in the central office with the Etowah County Board of Education. Both my children, my two boys, they also are teacher, coaches, and principals here in Etowah County. Also, their wives are teachers. So you can see that teaching is in our blood, and that's pretty much been my whole life is in the education field. Let me tell you a little bit about my education. I have a certification from Alabama A&amp;M. I'm a graduate of JSU, Jackson State. I have a BS in education. Also, I have an MS in education from Jackson State University. I have a double A from the University of Alabama, and then I have a PhD from La Salle University out of Chicago, and it's also in education. The reason I got into this race is because, as I told you earlier, I have just a deep desire for education and educating students of Etowah County. And I've always wanted to see education grow and improve, see our students be successful. I think the biggest thing that I have that I'd like to address, if I'm elected on the board with this, trying to reduce the dropout rates, the Gadsden City to zero. And I know this sounds kind of impractical, but this is something I've been working on for years. I'm in the process and have been for years of writing a book, and I'm about halfway through the book. And it's a two-part, a two-part book, which is kind of a how-to book. And the book goes into how to reduce dropouts to zero. And the first half really dwells upon teachers, teaching methods, which has to take place in the classroom. I have proven this particular curriculum ways of teaching. I have proven this in some of the schools that I have addressed. I did, was allowed one grade, one grade to participate as a group study group that I would have to other sections of the student unit. This method that I've come up with, the teaching, has proven very successful in all my trial and errors. The second part of the book that I'm working on deals with, yeah, it starts really in elementary school and follows right on graduation. Although you can implement the program, let's say, which would start in high school, but it would show a reduction in dropouts, but it wouldn't quite be as successful if we started in elementary school. And for it to be successful, it would have to be something that would start now, and then we carry right on through the 12 years of the students' time in school. And this would be something that I'd like, I would suggest to the ongoing, to the new board and to the superintendent, this would be something that I'd like them to take a look at, and hopefully they would be willing to adopt it, like to put it in place for our school system. As I said, I've studied this. I think it's something that's practical, it's something that will work, and it's really based on common sense. It's nothing out there. Uh-oh, the buzzer go off. Is my time up?
You've got one minute. You've got one. You've got one minute, Mr. Dixon.
All right. Do I need to ask anybody if they'd like to ask me a question, or is that going to follow?
No, just, if you will, just wrap up your remarks.
Okay. All right, and wrapping up then, as I said, I'm very experienced in education, and I have a strong desire to improve and carry on the traditions of the Gaston City system. And I promise you that I'll do a good job for you, and I'll always be available, just be receptive to any ideas, things that anyone would like to talk to me about or whatever. So I have the best interest of the school system at all times, and I'll always be available if you need to talk or whatever. So I appreciate the opportunity to be, to talk to you, and I'm just very sorry that I couldn't look face-to-face. You know, if anyone wants to meet here anytime, you know, my phone is available to anybody, and I'd be glad to sit down with you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Dixon. Thank you. I'm going to have to call you. Thank you very much. Okay, our next candidate... Yes, we're through. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for calling me.
Thank you. Okay, our next candidate for District 1 is Adrienne Reed.
Good evening, everyone. Y'all are going to have to forgive me because I spent a load of time working on trying to answer these questions, and I had no idea that we were going to have five minutes. And I am not a public speaker, but I tend to go long when I'm talking about things that I'm passionate about and things that are important to me. So some of these questions I'm going to skip, and what I'll do is I will just post them, or I'll make my number available for you guys to reach out and touch me if you want to, because I don't want to go long. I know y'all got things to do. Thank you for coming. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your passion. Everybody that's here is here because they love our kids. That's evident. It's evident in the journey that I've taken with my mom these last few weeks, knocking on doors and making phone calls and asking questions. I have been fortunate enough, and I mean that in the greatest sense of the word, to be able to sit with, hands down, the best people in this, in this country. Our parents, our students, our principals, our teachers. Me being the product of educators, me being the product of lifelong learners, anybody that knows my dad knows he's always trying to teach you something all the time, that I feel contributes to some of the passion that I feel. But the main reason why I'm up here today is because of Autumn. I am so excited to have this opportunity for our schools. I'm excited about everybody that's here sharing this stage with me, because we're here for the right reasons. We see the direction that our schools are going in, and we want to make sure that we give our kids every possible advantage that they can have. It doesn't matter that we're in Alabama. It doesn't matter that we're in Gadsden. What matters is that we've got, hands down, the smartest people, the most passionate people. We've got fighters. And right now, there's a lot at stake. Just not trying to be dramatic, but it's legitimately, our children's futures are at stake. I'm happy for this opportunity for us to have people up here that are democratically beholden to our children. So thank you again. I have gained such an education. I have had the opportunity to talk to eight of our principals so far, and when I say "talk to," I mean, these people sat down and spelled out and just poured onto me things that they're doing in their schools, things that we're doing within the system that are working, you know, things that we need to enhance, things that we need to have more resources for. It was kind of cute to me, because when I asked that question to some of them, they were like, wow, nobody's told us, asked us what we're doing right. That's important, too. We are good at Gadsden City about, at Gadsden City about celebrating our kids, but sometimes we need to celebrate the actions that we're doing right, too, because they are family. Our principals are a family, our parents and our, we're all a family, we're all a community, and we're communicating things, but a lot of times, we focus on the negative. So I'm hoping that we can put more love within these walls, and we can put more positivity within these walls. But I've been asking them that question. I've been asking them the question about, you know, what are things, where are the major places where we have room for improvement? And they're pouring all sorts of information out. And because we've got this condensed timeframe, I was hoping I was going to have the opportunity to share a lot of those major things with you all today, but I'm not going anywhere. So if anybody is anxious to see what I've gleaned throughout the system, I'm happy to share that with you. Another thing is that I like about our administration that we have in place is that they're radically thinking, because right now, for our school system, right now for Alabama schools, we righteously need radical change. So I'm so blessed and so happy that they were able to give me that time, and I can see that I'm very happy and very proud of the peoples whose children are in their hands. In the conversations that I've had with our kids, it has been a roller coaster. I had the fortune of speaking with a bunch of kids the other day, and I asked them, I said, can you just give me a grade of what you think about our school system? And the average was a 59 out of 11 kids, and I don't think that's acceptable at all. I think that even if our grade for the system was a 99.9, if our kids don't feel supported, then we're failing them. So that was heartbreaking, but also at the same time motivational, because I feel like with passion, with vigor, with people that are wanting to fight and like duke it out for our children, that we can raise their self-esteem and make them feel a lot better about these walls that they're in every day. My time is up, but like I said, if anyone wants to reach out to me, I'm available. Thank you for your time. God bless all of you.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Our next candidate from Council District 1 is LaShayla Thomas.
Good evening. As you say that, I am LaShayla Thomas, and I'm representing District 1, which is mainly the East Gadsden area. And if you've seen anything that I've posted or given out, I've used "from student to advocate" as my slogan, because I had the opportunity to matriculate through the Gadsden City school system. I actually graduated from Litchfield, class of 2006, which was the last class to graduate from Litchfield before they combined the schools to Gadsden City. So I do feel that I'm qualified to serve our children, because I've been on both sides. And now I do have children in the Gadsden City school system, and my oldest daughter, London, actually goes to Yerbroeck, and that has come up in several conversations, so I want to address that, so everyone knows why I chose that, which is mainly the reason why I ended up where I am today. Yerbroeck is a blue ribbon school, and if you know anything about education and the product of education, you know that being a blue ribbon school and having a report card that's mainly 100% is really good. So I chose that school because I wanted to afford her those opportunities. But now I want to advocate for some of the same students in my district to have those opportunities. So being an advocate means I'm willing to go out and fight for those children to have those same opportunities, and I'm also willing to stand along Mr. Reddick, because we actually work for him. We take the issues to him. He decides if they're important. And so being an advocate means that I'm going to fight for, but I'm also pliable and willing to work alongside the people who are serving with me. One of the questions that we were asked had to do with the alternative schools and their level of education that they receive once they're removed from their normal setting to the alternative setting. I had an opportunity about three weeks ago to go and speak to a class over at the alternative school, and the children actually had an opportunity to interview me. And so once they were done interviewing me, I asked them questions about how they felt about their setting and the things that they were enduring. And one of the things they said is that they felt like the teachers at the alternative school cared about them more than the teachers who were in their normal setting, and that they had more time with them, and they took time with them, and they also helped them with their work more. And I also learned that they were not given the regular curriculum that the students at Gadsden City or whatever school they came from received. So I don't think it's fair that if they're punished and sent to alternative school, that they are not matriculated at the same level, because at some point, they'll be released back to their normal setting, and they'll be behind. So we have to remember, we're not just punishing them for their behaviors when we send them to alternative school. We're taking away their educational opportunity, and that's unfair. Another question that we were asked was about elementary schools and how we can make them better. I recall being at Adams when it became a magnet school. And if you're familiar with magnet schools, it offers a more STEM setting, it offers a more scientific and mathematic approach, and that's one of the things that our elementary schools, not just in one district, but all districts should model. And I just want to make this point. We say that Gadsden is a city of champions, and my goal is that we don't look like a section of champions, that we really do model a city of champions. If we want to excel in any area, our schools have to do well. Businesses will not come here, families will not come here. We will never succeed as a people, as a community, until our schools are better, and our children are our future. I went from student to advocate. So if given the opportunity to serve, I'll go back and go through some of the same things that I went through before, but I'll have a different knowledge of doing so. One of the things that I was also asked while being at the alternative school is about the importance of communication and transparency. That's one of the things that I would like to push for the school board to be more adamant about, is being transparent with our parents, looking them in the eyes, shaking their hands, reminding them that they're important. And it may mean, I remember when I was in elementary school, my teachers would come to the house, they would shake my mom's hand, they would make eye contact with her because she was involved. So that may mean we have to actually get out in our communities, knock on some doors, be uncomfortable. I'm scared of cats and dogs, but on this campaign trail, I have encountered almost everything you can think of. But these are the people who are sitting in their home and do not realize that they have a voice. And even if you're here tonight and you don't have children in the school system, or you know someone who was saying, this has nothing to do with me, it has everything to do with you. If you're in this city, the choices and decisions that we make about our school system is reflective of everyone in the city. So we have to change our mindset of thinking that this is me and this is mine and dwelling in our silos. We have to operate as one collective unit. So that's my goal, just collectiveness, transparency, and definitely being able to communicate adequately what's going on and being honest, not being proactive or just reactive, but definitely getting ahead of what's going on. So again, my name is LaShayla Thomas. I'm a fast talker. I hope I made all my points, and remember me from student to advocate.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Our last candidate tonight from District 1 is Eva Edkins Timmons.
Thank you for the opportunity to let me come and share a few things with you. I am running for District 1, that's the East Gadsden area, with three, two other young ladies. Thank you very much for running. I'm a retired educator, and I love children, and that's the reason I want to work in the community with Gadsden City. They gave me four questions that I should address. I just got these questions about 2 o'clock today. So just give me a few minutes, and I'll try to explain them as best I can. I have to have glasses. These ladies didn't. I'm sorry. I have to have glasses. These ladies didn't. I'm sorry. Okay. It says, what is your position on charter schools in Gadsden City system? Well, in my opinion, I prefer not. We've had magnet schools and I have found that they didn't work in our area. We have bought supplies and equipment where the teachers, after a few years, has thrown their materials away. And I believe that it's throwing away taxpayers' money. We work too hard in our system and our jobs to throw money away in our system. It is important to, how is, how important is to maintain a regular curriculum in the classroom in an alternative school? Why should our kids be in an alternative school anyway? That's a question we should ask our parents. Why are our kids there? We should stop and ask. We shouldn't have to have a different curriculum. We should have a curriculum for all the kids. They should be the same. The course of study of Alabama should be the same for all the kids in all the grades. We should address all of those issues and all of those courses study guidelines. We should make sure all of our kids should get those guidelines and they should be followed. What do you consider to be one of the most challenging issues in our school system? I feel that one of the challenging systems, things in our systems is being fundedly fun, being equally funded in each and every school. I don't feel like each school is funded correctly. And some schools get certain things, other schools don't. I want to know why. Why are each schools, some schools are getting more things, other schools are getting less. I feel like each school should be treated fairly. It says, since you have been in early education, describe your platform. I feel like every child should have a firm foundation. It's just like your house. If you put your house on a shabby foundation, it's going to crumble. And that's the reason our kids are not doing well. We're trying to teach them above their capabilities. We need to get back to the basics. We need to teach them how to read, how to do the basic math. Instead of trying to teach them algebra in the first grade, they should know how to do adding and subtraction first, before they try to do all those other things. It's difficult, it's difficult if they start at the top and try to go to the bottom because they hadn't got that firm foundation on the bottom that they need to work all these problems and things that they have to deal with. We need more parent involvement. Community partnership and teacher leadership. What I mean by teacher leadership is that teachers can teach, help teach other teachers to do the best they can. LaShayla talked about blue ribbon schools. I feel like all of our schools could be blue ribbon schools. Not just Yerbroeck and not just John Jones. And not just, I'm just calling out schools because I know that our schools, we all have the capabilities in all of our schools to do the best we can do. And I would like to see blue ribbon schools over at Donahue, over at Adams, over at Floyd. I would like to see that everywhere, not just at one school. Okay, 20 seconds. I'm sorry. I don't talk very much. Community partnership, I'm going to go. But community partnership is where we have different banks and different groups that wants to come into the school systems. But they are into the schools. Okay, bye.
Okay, before I introduce the next candidate, I want to say something about the questions. Each of the candidates were given the same four questions in advance and many of them didn't see them until earlier this afternoon. But, and I was asked to stress this part, they are not required to answer those questions. They can just simply go over their, their campaign platform and certainly make whatever speech they want to make. And Mr. Carter hasn't, hasn't arrived, has he? Okay. Our next candidate was supposed to be Mr. Carter. He works until 6:00 and hasn't had time to get here yet. So what I'm going to do is go to the next District Two candidate and that is Mr. Robert Hunter.
Hello, thank you. And I'm very happy to be here with all the other candidates. My name is Robert Hunter. More than likely, most of y'all know me for either working on Kyle Pierce's campaign, Carolyn Parker's campaign, or you know my mom, Loretta Jones. But today I'm here as a candidate for District Two. One of the things that's been brought to my attention is the reading level of some of the kids in the elementary schools. One of the things I want to start when I bring into my platform of unity is make a reading, uh, sorry, Reading Youth Brigade. The same thing that my grandmother spends some of her time donating, speaking and reading to the youth. I want to make a brigade of young adults doing the same thing. As for my views on the system as a whole, I think we are doing great and I think that with a few other tweaks that we can even be better. One of the things that is interested me is a Senate bill that actually just came up. Senate Bill 119, dealing with Common Core and removing it. Thank you, Senator Jones, for being here. And I am very happy to say that I am gratefully, my bad. Sorry. Another thing that I'm trying to get across, but I'm having trouble with is I want to be more clear and have more accountability when it comes to the Board of Education. A part of it being that sometimes you have parents that can't get to the meetings because either they have work, like Mr. Carter, or they're coming off of work and they have to pick up their kids. Which is why when I'm elected, one of the first things I'm going to do is I'm going to start having a one, one day out of the month meeting down either in Thompson or the East Gas Community Center where, where anyone who has any problems, anyone who has any suggestions can come and meet me face to face. When I'm out door knocking, one of the first things people asks is, why in the world do we only see you once a month? If that, or in cases like this, only once every four years. I think that better connecting to the people we're supposed to be helping and serving will help everyone else with turnout when it comes to the actual interconnectivity of the community. Thank you and y'all have a good night. God bless Gadsden.
Good evening, everyone. At this time, I'm going to give you a little break. You can't go nowhere. But you can stand up and stretch your legs for just one minute, all right? All right, y'all want to sit there? At this time, I also want to recognize Etowah County Commission, Mr. Overstreet in back. Thank you for being here, along with all the other city officials and everyone that makes up this great Gadsden area. So we're going to move forward. When Mr. Carter comes in, we're going to allow him to step right on in, continue into the rotation. But at this time, we're going to go to District Four with Mr. Frank Pugh.
Thank you for this opportunity. I'm glad to be here. I taught at this school for eight years and I love it. I love the kids and I'm, and that's why I'm here. I'm going to try to address the questions that we were given. And if I finish that, then I have questions, if you have questions later, then I'll address those. The first question was about charter schools. And I don't know a lot about charter schools. I looked it up on internet and you know, what do you, what'd you see on internet? You can believe it or not. But the, from what I can gather, a charter school is a private school, but it's funded by the government. And I'm just not in favor of that. There's, I'm a big fan of public education. I'm a product of public education. My children, my wife, and my family is a product of public education. And I think we've done pretty good with it. I don't claim to understand it all, but I'd like to know who decides where the school's going to be? Who, who writes the charter? Who makes up the, the requirements to be in or who, who, who does all that work? Who decides where the schools are going to be? Who, who gets the kids there and back? Who's responsible for transportation? Do the teachers have to have the same certification? I just don't understand how, how it would work and how it could be better. Extracurricular activities, I just don't understand how it could be a better. If we've got better ideas, let's put them in place in the schools that we have. Our school system has provided a lot of opportunities for a lot of people and we've done pretty good with it. So no, to answer that question, I'm, I'm just not in favor of charter school. Question number two, how important is it to maintain the regular curriculum for child entering the alternative school? You know, it's very important. I think the least we have, the least we should offer is the same education that we're offering over here and at the other schools. In addition to that, I think some counseling, some mentoring, find out why is this child here? What kind of mistakes have led to this behavior that would, would make a child wind up over here? If we're not going to look at that and try to correct that, they're going to be back there again. So yeah, we owe it to our children in, in the alternative school as well as, as all the rest of our schools. Find out what they need, give them what they need. If they need mentoring, give them mentoring. If they need counseling, give them counseling. Keep them out of that situation. We don't want them back there again. If we offer them less, that would be immoral. So sure, I think we need to enforce and stick with the same curriculum that we have here and at the other schools. And in addition to that, find out why that child's there. Find out what we can do to keep him from coming back there. Offer him whatever it takes, or him or her, whatever it takes to get them out of that situation and keep them out of it. A lot of times, there are things going on in the child's life that we're not aware of. And the only way to find out is to try to find out. They're not, a lot of times, they're just not going to come and tell you. So find out what's going on in that child's life before we come down on too hard. Give them what they need. Minimum what they need. The third question was the most challenging issue facing the system today and why. My platform pretty much is based on parental involvement and community buy-in. I think that the biggest problem we face is parent parental participation and parental buy-in. A lot of parents send their children to school and they just assume everything's going to be okay. Most of the time it is. Sometimes it's not. We have to encourage our parents to take part, to come to the school, to, to know what's going on. Your child comes home and says, we're not having any homework. That's probably not true. But if you just accept that, then it's true for them. A lot of times, they don't have any idea what's happening until something bad happens. And then they come in and say, why didn't I know about this? You didn't know about it because you weren't here. And it's our job to get them here. We need to encourage them to be here. More, more, the more parents we can get involved, the more we can avoid these situations. A lot of times, children are involved in an award ceremony. The parents don't know anything about it. Just because we put it on internet don't mean they're going to know. Just because it's there doesn't mean it's seen. So I think we owe it to our children, we owe it to our parents, we owe it to ourselves. Let them know what's happening. Make sure they know. Try to get them here. Try to get them involved. And we'll all be better off for it. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. I'm, I'm looking forward to serving. I love this school and I love you. Thank you.
Also, ladies and gentlemen, the polls are open. You can't have to wait till the date of the election. You can go tomorrow and vote. Okay, so you don't have to wait and crowd yourself and get caught up. Go ahead and get it out the way because we don't know what may happen in the foreseeable future. So at this time, we're going to ask Mr. Beal Browning of District Five to come.
Thank you and good evening, everyone. As the polls are open now, Gadsden citizens can go out and decide what kind of Board of Education they want and what kind of schools they want in the future. It's a, it's a unique time. I was born in Gadsden. Doesn't sound like it, but I was. I was educated in Etowah County Schools from grades one through eight when my family moved to Mobile, New Orleans, and then New York. Since 1998, education has been my second career. I even went back to graduate school to earn a doctorate, master's and doctorate in, in education at the University of Florida. So I'm very involved. I am data-driven. And I'd like to take a shot now at some of the questions that the Voters League provided me. Charter schools, I am not a fan. I'm not a fan for very concrete reasons. Anybody can start a charter school. Most charter schools are not regulated and they're not accredited. Charter schools often go bankrupt. Their graduation rates are the same as public schools in the 50% or lower range. So we're not getting any benefit from charter schools anywhere in the country. Also, charter schools take away resources from the existing public school system, which is in dire need of resources. So there are concrete reasons to oppose charter schools. And I stand in that, in that lane of opposition. Another question was something I really didn't know a lot about and that was the curriculum choices at the alternative schools. So yesterday afternoon, I went to the Alternative High School and met with the director, Dr. Donna Smoots. And asked, what goes on here? Where do your students come from, et cetera? And she spent about an hour with me going over the purposes of the, of the alternative schools. These are, the population of the school is approximately 25. The number varies during the year and she expects an uptick in the inflow as we near the school end. And these are students who face possible expulsion. This is the last stop prior to expulsion. They are automatically referred if they are engaged in sex or drug use on, on the school campus. Or they are a student for whatever reasons, have difficulty in class, emotional issues, et cetera, and they have been suspended multiple times. So the school system suspends, 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 go to alternative school for a maximum of 45 days and then most students go back into the regular school. As far as the quality of education there, it's already been cited by another candidate that the class sizes are small. Students are tested when they, they enter the alternative school to determine what level of education they're at. Dr. Smoots told me that unfortunately, a lot of the students don't read or write very well. And unfortunately, to sit them into a core curriculum, it might be very, very difficult and not helpful at all. So they find out where the student is and then they go from there and hopefully get the student back on track. She says there's very little recidivism, which is a good sign. And I, I think the curriculum issue may be moot with the new Senate bill that's been proposed to do away with the core curriculum. So we'll see. If I were to sum up my educational philosophy, it would be students first. I'm, I'm all for training the whole student, the whole person, rather than a regiment of good test takers. The achievement gap, through research I did when I was in graduate school, begins before a student enters the first grade. My research, I was looking at issues with, with students who are failing in, in community colleges. Every, what's up? What's up? All right. Thank you very much, Bill Browning, District Five.
Yes, I know I called him. He was up. Thank you. At this time, we're going to have from District Five, Mr. Mark Dayton.
Let's see if this is tall enough. Okay. So my name's Mark Dayton. First, forgive me for not being in a suit and tie. My daughter had a college match today. My son had a tennis match today and he actually unfortunately got hurt, had to get a wrist brace put on. So I did not have time to go home to get put on a suit and tie. That said, my name's Mark Dayton. Some of you already know me as Coach Dayton from working with kids. Some of you know me from my community. If you know about me buying houses in my own district, fixing them up. I've cared about this community and I've lived in it for 19 years in this very district in two different homes. That said, I address this as the community is first. We have a unique situation in District Five. We don't have a whole lot of voters. Most of our voters are older people. That said, many of them, when I knock on their doors, they say, "This is not a subject that means anything to me. It's not something I have to vote on." I'm a firm believer and so goes our schools, so goes our communities. Because here's the problem, businesses don't want to come here. As a businessman who owns a plaza, businesses do not want to come here to an educational force that is not well-educated. Here's another situation. We are very far behind the times. If you take a look at any one of the websites, you'll notice that some websites say we're at 8%, some websites are 16% for AP and honors, but we're also behind on dual enrollment. A lot of our tax dollars went into trade schools and those are good schools, HVAC, plumbing, welding, carpentry. Why are we not making sure those kids are getting into those programs? The state of Alabama, when I called the Bureau of, it's through the State Bureau of Investigations, estimates that one-third of all the students that graduate from a high school that do not go off to college and do not go to a trade school end up in drugs, alcoholism, pregnancy. They end up on dependency with us, with the HR. And worse off, they end up in crime. They're the ones who are breaking into our homes. Our senior citizens need to understand that the Board of Education and these school systems matter to them. Our property values are based off of the grade. I am standing in the auditorium of District Five. This used to be our rec center. This used to be our playground. We don't have any playgrounds or rec centers in District Five anymore. We gave it up for this very school and this school's grade is low right now. If you've looked it up online, I'm not going to bash the school, but there's some things that need to be changed. Because as a guy who places kids into programs, I know how important it is for the ACT, the SAT, the entrance scores, and your grades. And we don't even start doing that until your junior year. So if we're not educating children to go take their ACT and their SAT course and know it, it should be done in seventh grade. So in eighth grade, they take it the first time. Because guess what? All of our Alabama school system super scores. So if they get a really good math score one time and a really good writing score, here's the opportunities. And it's not just for college, it's for trade schools. Gadsden State, if you're taking your ACT in April, guess what? You're behind the grade. You're behind the times. Half the money is already gone. Most of the money is already gone. So how are these kids supposed to afford to pay for college? We need to fix the system. But here's how we do it. There's a really good principal sitting right back there, one of my favorite principals of all times, one of my children's favorites. He did a lot with math in this system. We need to work with our principals and with our superintendent and we need to come up with a plan and a system that works. We need to fix the problems in our community and it has to be fixed first with the children. So goes our community, so goes our children. My simple platform for some of these answers, I did not get the questions until late last night after 11 o'clock. It's really simple. There's an old saying, "No child left behind." So let's do that. Let's not leave any children behind. If they're behind in one grade, let's fix it in the next. If they're behind right now, let's fix it. Let's figure out how we're going to get our students and our children into college programs, trade schools, and technical schools instead of out on our streets with nothing to do and working in chicken plants. No offense, but it's time to fix those problems. Or in fixing that problem will also bring up the elevation of the employers that have to hire them at a higher rate, where that chicken plant would be 1050 an hour instead of minimum wage. Everything in your community starts, begins, and ends with this school system. And we need to fight back now. And in my community, we need to actually get out and vote. Thank you.
Our last candidate for District Five is Ms. Glenda S. Jackson.
Hello, I am Glenda Jackson. I am a candidate for District, in District Five. I am an educator. I received my formal education in the Gadsden City School System. And I got my, I went on to college and I went to Jacksonville State University where I received my math, where I received my BS degree in elementary education. I received my minor in special education. I also went to UAB where I received my master's in elementary education and I have a certification in administration. Also have done post-work leading toward my doctorate and I will begin those studies. The last class that I had was in, last year in the spring of 2018. I would like to first of all, thank the Volga of the Women's Voters League for hosting this. Ms. Christophens, thank you very much. And I would like to move forward to the questions that I did receive in the email. And my position for charter schools is that I believe it's the responsibility of parents, it's your responsibility to make sure that your child achieves and receives the best education that you can provide for your child. There is guidelines, there are guidelines that have been adopted by the Alabama State Board of Education on charter schools. These guidelines were adopted in 2015. And the guidelines that are adopted are the mainstream thread that flowed through every guideline was that every child is students. We should focus in on students. Parents, it's your responsibility as parents to make sure that you give your child the best education that you can give your child. If in the reading of the guidelines, if there is, it is called an authorizer, comes to the Gadsden City Board, it is not my responsibility to turn away. I am to be objective according to the guidelines that have been established by the Alabama State Board of Education. So there are guidelines that govern charter schools for the state of Alabama. And if there are, for me as an educator, I taught in the Gadsden School System, I taught in the Anderson School System. I have one of my former students sitting here, Councilman David Reddick from the Anderson City, who was one of my students. And if you can achieve it, if you can dream it, you can achieve it. I know that there are children that are in the classroom, and I taught in public schools and I taught in private schools, that they can attain, they can achieve anything in which the parents, it's your responsibility to make sure that you provide for them every experience that they can experience in the school setting. Every child would not be on the same level. You will not have a monogamous classroom. You have to be able to adapt to each child in your classroom as a teacher. And it would be my responsibility on the board to make sure that your child and the resources are there for your child to be able to achieve and to reach the goals that you have for your child. The formative years of learning for your child begins at birth. You should start reading to your child when your child comes out of your womb. And those are the formative years in which children learn. You base a foundation of learning to your child by reading to your child 15 minutes and having your child read back to you even if they're making up words. You will be able to see your child excel in any grade level that they would like to because you have to provide for them the resources. We have the Gadsden Public Library, which is one of the resources that we as educators and you as parents can provide for your child to receive the best education. My responsibility on the board would be to make sure that we provide the resources for everything that your child would need to exceed and excel. I ask you, anything that you can dream, you can achieve, and I ask you to vote Glenda Jackson in District Number Five because I have the pedigree to lead your child to the highest heights that you want your child to go. Thank you.
At this time, we're moving on from District Five to District Six. Now we are happily to have Mr. Kevin Rigby.
Good evening. Y'all kind of dead. Good evening. I'm elated to be here today. I'm Kevin Rigby. I was born and raised in District Six. And we all know why we're here tonight, but first of all, let me tell you, I'm an educator, not a politician. I'm a stakeholder in Gadsden City Schools. And this is a great opportunity and I come with experience from the inside out. I've been at the alternative school. I've taught in the classroom. I have an AS degree in business administration, a BS degree in secondary education, a master's degree in educational leadership, and an EDS degree in educational administration. And when I went and thought about the alternative schools, those are the kids that many refer to as the bad kids, well, they have a right to learn also. They're entitled to a quality education, the same education that they received before they got sent there. Somebody said, "Well, how do we do that?" Education is expensive, but ignorance is a debt that you will never repay. So we do that with technology. Distanced learning. Teachers hit a button. Alternative students, look at your screen, listen to your instructor, got a question, push a button. The fix is simple. And that's one of our biggest problems. I've worked in the classroom, I've taught at schools with low test scores, but you know what? I helped them bring them up. I've coached on the field, in the courts, and it really bothers me to have an athlete to play sports and then get to the 12th grade year and they can't qualify to go to college because they can't pass ACT tests. That hurts me. Now our staff and administrators and teachers, they work hard to educate our kids and I'm not here to bash anybody. We all can improve. Folks, we got to do better. Often we say, "Well, test scores don't determine a lot." Yes, they do. Test score determines whether or not you get that scholarship. Test score determines whether or not you get into that school of your choice. Now Gadsden is often referred to as the city of champions. Often, yes, we have students that receive millions of dollars in scholarships, but what about that child that didn't score high enough? What happens to them? We're referred to as the city of champions? I want to live up to that slogan. But let's keep it real. According to the data, Gadsden City High School ranks 251 out of 356. That's a fact, Jack. According to the records, our school system ranks 81 out of 126. That's a fact. Schooldigger.com. When our math proficiency is 13%, we can do better. When our reading proficiency is 25%, we can do better. Not blaming anybody, but it's time for everybody to roll up your pants leg, put on your boots, and let's do something about it. We need parental participation. Parents, don't just come to school when you got a problem. Come to school just to check and see how your kid's doing. Community people, don't sit up and just complain because now is your opportunity. If you don't vote, you don't need to say a word. Now, as far as charter schools, I used to be against them, but you know what I've changed? Charter schools give you a choice. And that choice means this, that your child has an opportunity to learn not set by a set curriculum or standard. As I was saying earlier, everybody doesn't learn the same. And what charter school does is gives you a choice to let you deviate from the state standard. But there's also Alabama State Commission of Charter Schools. Gadsden, we can't live in 1960. Get ready, they coming. The first one opened in Montgomery last year, one opened in Birmingham this coming year. So you can get ready, get on, or get left. Now, parents get involved. People get involved. Time is now. It's urgent. Educate our kids. It's not about the politics, it's not about favoritism or buddy-ism. Kids first, and I promise you, the results will be fine. Vote Kevin. Thank you.
Moving on from District Six to District Seven, Ms. Glenda Hicks.
Hi, it is such a pleasure to be here and I think we should just let everybody go for the Board of Education. I have loved this. I've been out of education for a little while, but volunteering in schools and once a teacher, always a teacher. I'm a little nervous. I didn't get the questions, but I've been jotting down some ideas. I do want to give you my qualifications. I was a former educator with the Gadsden City District, the Gadsden City Schools in District Seven, which is what I'm running in, the district from the mountain and parts of Alabama City. I taught at R.A. Mitchell, George W. Floyd, General Forrest, and Emma Sansom when they merged. I'm a graduate of Edgewall High School, but my children were products of the Gadsden City School System. I'm a member of Bellevue Baptist Church, which I love. I am a resident of District Seven, always have been. I'm a president of the Gadsden Library Board and a member of the Alabama State Organization of the Delta Capagama Society of Key Women Educators and a member of the Alabama Education Association. And I'm a little nervous, so I thought I'd read first. I thank you for the opportunity to be here and as they were discussing charter schools, my son lives in Raleigh, North Carolina, and when I've gone there, I did visit a charter school because I agree, it is an option now. And unfortunately, that's because people are disappointed with the education that their children are getting. I am not a fan of charter schools at all because to make it work, it is really a unique situation. Takes a lot of strategic planning and total parent involvement. It's not just that the children will receive a funding from their state. The parents give money, they give time, which is scheduled monthly, weekly. They go in and work in the situations like lunchrooms and all sorts of things. So it is total dedication. It's not something where it's socio-economic, they put their finger on a map and say, "Oh, we'll build this school, you know, with a great fancy name and build it and they will come." It doesn't work like that. And I think in our area that we don't have to be so concerned with this because we do have a lot of families that are working two jobs and single parents that they want to send their children to school, our schools, and get the best education possible. They do not have time nor money to finance another school, paying tax money as we do. And that leads me to the other question. If we were saying, "What's the most important thing today?" You know, I've forgotten how it reads, "The most challenging issue." Well, you know, sometimes that changes every day because if we had an emergency tragedy of some sort in any of our schools in Gadsden today, you know what our answer would be for tomorrow? It would be safety. But taking that aside, as of right now, if I were asked that question, I would think it would be managing the financial situation that we have. But taking that aside, as of right now, if I were asked that question, I would think it would be managing the financial situation that we have. Using the resources, using the assets, and using it wisely. I mean, we know from home, you know, our wants are not necessarily our needs, or our needs are wants. And so as a board member, this is one of the number-one things, is approving the budget and making sure that it is spent wisely and effectively. Another one of the questions I understand was about early education. Oh, and I do want to touch on the alternative curriculum. I too agree. As a former teacher, it's very sad when a student becomes, you know, it's so detrimental to the learning of others that they must be removed to another situation. It's heartbreaking, because that is a cry of help on behalf of that student. So to seclude them into a complete different atmosphere where there are problems completely, oh, see? Okay. The curriculum should go on. We are to build up students. We're not to take away their opportunities. So that's a given fact, and I think everyone agreed with that. Early education is where my heart is. I believe in the foundation. I believe that is where we really are the teacher that inspires, that motivates, that creates in that child to help them prosper with the rest of their education. All of you can remember that first teacher beside your home or your church. So early education is uniquely important, and I think the number-one thing that we might need to develop along that line to improve would be the parental involvement and make our schools welcome. Make the people that are the ones that are going to do the most for you, make them welcome and important in your school. And I am so glad that we have an elected Board of Education, because that gives the parent the true feeling of being the one that makes decisions too. Thank you.
I hate to be standing up over everybody, scaring them about the time, but it's my job. Our last candidate of District Seven, Mr. Alan Milliken. And after that, we'll wrap up, and we will adjourn. Has Mr. Nathan Carter arrived? Okay, he won't be here. Mr. Alan Milliken.
Thank you, folks, and I appreciate the opportunity to come here and speak to you tonight. I'm not an educator in the sense of the word as far as the classroom, even though I was going to be a teacher once upon a time and did the secondary education, got to the student teaching part, and had a wife and two kids, and couldn't lose the job that I had at the time. But I am an educator in a sense that I am retired Circuit Judge Alan Milliken. I've been practicing law for thirty-six years. Seventeen of that, I was the presiding Circuit Judge of Etowah County. The last fourteen years of that, I was the, like I said, the presiding Circuit Judge of the county. So in a sense, I've always had a philosophy, and I really wanted to put it to the test. And it goes like this. I see the results of the failed school system on my end of it as a judge. I seen the kids that comes through that doesn't have the education, doesn't have the job skills, and they wind up in the criminal justice system and their own drugs. And I've said for many, many years that if we would put the time and the effort and the resources on the front end of these kids, then maybe we wouldn't have to have it on the back end of these kids. We should be putting more effort in the school systems and the monies in the school systems and building more schools and those type of organizations instead of more prisons and more jails. That's what we ought to be doing, and that's kind of what I want to bring to this table. I have skills, and I'm offering those skills to my community. As the presiding judge of this county, I had million-dollar budgets that I had to oversee. As the presiding judge of this county, I had to bring together coalitions from the county commission to the sheriff, to the district attorney's office, to the various judges, to the clerks. We got dozens and dozens and dozens of employees. And I was the administrative head of that. And I was able to bring those people together and sit down and find common ground with them to get the job done. And that's what I want to do as a member of this Board of Education that we're going to put together. I want to try to bring together all of our resources and all of our people together and work as one so that we can have the best that we can do for our children. And I have a selfish interest in this. I've got grandchildren that are in this school system. I've got two that's at Mitchell, and I've got one that's at Gadsden Middle School. I've got three nieces that are in the system. I want to make sure that they have the best opportunities that's available for them. And I want to tell you a little bit about myself, because I think that's important. I'll get to the questions. There, I'll get to those before I get through. But I want you to understand that I grew up in a broken home. I lived with aunts and relatives and friends, and I've been without a roof over my head at times. I had teachers and I had individuals in my lifetime that thought I had merit and came out and helped me get where I'm at today. I went to Elliott Grammar School. I went to Dwight Grammar School. I went to Walnut Park Grammar School. That's just in Gadsden. I also hit a Tala and Curtisston, Alma Hinson, which is gone now, General Forrest. Graduated from Emma Sansom. I used to tell people, I spent my winters at Sansom and my summers at Gadsden High. Because we didn't have alternative schools back in them days, and I actually flunked tenth-grade English and woodshop. And I did that because I think I'd moved about six times around during that period of time, and I actually went to work with the Neighborhood Youth Corps in nineteen sixty-six and made up enough money to go to Gadsden High and catch up my credits and graduate on time. And when I got through with high school, I didn't have the money to go to college, so I went into service. And when I came home in seventy-two, I went to work at local thirteen thirty-three Labor Hall. We called it Ditch Diggers Anonymous over on First Street. And I worked my way through going to the junior college at night or working in the daytime and going to school at night. And I went through junior college, we called it Harvard on the Hill back in the day. And I got my associate's degree. And then I switched over to the University of Alabama Cooperative Upper Division and got a bachelor's degree. Going to night school, never spent one day on campus. Did that. Then I lucked out in seventy-five and got a job at the post office unloading trucks at night. And trucks, I'm not talking about letters, I'm talking about mail sacks that weighed sixty or seventy pounds. And I stayed with them for ten years. Got one minute. I am not in favor of charter schools. They got a commission. The legislature has set the charter schools up, and whether I'm in favor of them or not, they're going to happen. If you don't want them, you need a good Board of Education that's going to do something that gives you the schooling that you need, and you won't have to worry about that. The curriculum of alternative, I agree with some of my colleagues that said it's not as much about the curriculum, which they should get. It's about the problem that got them there. You need to work on that. And as far as the status quo, I think that you got a double-edged sword. You got folks that got to have AP classes, and you got folks that are struggling, and you got to accommodate both of them. You can't do everything for the AP folks and let the struggling ones go by the wayside. But you can't let the struggling ones go and then not do something for the APs. And the ones about the trade school and everything else, you are right on point. We ought to be teaching them, "Man, I can do carpentry work. I can do plumbing. I can do electrical. I can do, I'm a good tile setter. I can do masonry." You can work. If you can work, that's the main thing. So having said all that, I'm running for District Seven. You know anybody, tell them. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you to all the candidates that came. Please, let's give them a round of applause. And I'm going to just, oh, well, seeing the superintendent come in, thank you, Mr. Reddick, for being here. And these people will have your back, whoever's elected. Because some of them said, "So goes this school system, so goes our city." That is true. We sit up there at the city council, and when you have businesses come in here, first thing they look at is the education, because their kid's going to have to go to school here. Then they look at the crime rate. So we have to get all this together so we can get businesses. People complain that we don't have good-paying jobs here. Well, we're going to have to do our parts so we can get it here. So we want to say thank you again. Thank you to our moderators, Mr. Earl D. Dixon Hayes. Thank you to our chairperson. Thank you so much. Thank you, everybody. Listen, we're going to invite you all to go to the back, and we're going to have a little meet and greet. If you want to ask the candidates questions, you can. Thank you so much.